From close. We are back from closed session. Dr. Hurst, do we have anything to report out?
I don't have anything to report out.
Thank you very much, sir. So we're going to continue with the workshop, which is being facilitated by the folks at Leadership Associates.
Okay. I'm on. You're missing Sandy. Wait. Sandy waiting to get on still? Okay. Can you hear me, board members? Okay. Think Dr. Hurst is on mute. There she comes. Okay.
I'm on right now.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, sorry about that. This is technology simplifying our lives, so.
Yay!
There we go. Okay. Good. Oh, well. Thanks again for the opportunity to be with you tonight. For the next couple hours or so, we're going to focus on initiatives to improve the effectiveness of the governance team, the board, and the superintendent working together, helping the board functioning as a highly effective governance body and dealing with some of the issues that might prevent that from happening. Try to understand the ways in which we can all work together more effectively. So I think one of the signs of a good board is always its willingness to look at practice and say, how are we doing? And once in a while, to try something different. Because I think we can sometimes lose sight of some changes that might be necessary to improve our effectiveness. And it's important, once in a while, to be willing to experiment a little bit, to take a chance and try something new, see if it works, and if it doesn't. And four of you are new this year, so there's a lot of learning, big learning curve going on here. And but I think Sandy Thorstens and I have been impressed by your interest in learning how to be better board members, your interest in how we can work together effectively with our superintendent. And certainly, the time commitment you've made for months to go through an extensive search process that involved listening to your community. I, you know, we've shared with our colleagues a number of times that we had the largest participation rate in the online survey in community meetings that we've had in inner district we worked in. That's a big plus. People care about the quality of the schools. They may differ on what the best way is to get there. But for the most part, you we live it, we're part of a community that cares about the schools and wants to be sure that, and I'll use your words, Mr. Phillips, on this, that each child attends a safe school where they're engaged in learning and meeting high standards and stuff. I think that just says it just, just about right. And I think that commitment is there on everybody's part. So in a previous retreat session, we talked a lot about roles and responsibilities of the board and superintendent. Let's revisit that just a little bit and focus more specifically on two, two aspects. The function of board officers and the function of the board roles and response of the board as a whole itself. It's our understanding that we're still going through a process of, let's start with the board president. You know, what the role of the board president is. And because that's a very important role in if I in your, in your district, it's you elect a person to that office annually. There are responsibilities to go with that office to ensure the effective conduct of the board, to work directly with the superintendent on certain matters such as agenda planning and all that. So what we want to be sure first of all to start with is there's clarity about the role of the board president, because there are special responsibilities that go with that position. We also understand that there may be some different perspectives on that. So we'd like to hear from each of you to begin with. And I think we'll start with you, Mr. Phillips, because you are the returning board member. You've been occupying this role through a very challenging time. Not just with COVID, but a superintendent's search, changes in leadership, fiscal issues and all that. And you've been faced with a challenge of providing leadership to the board in a transition period and all that. What do you see as the role of the board president? And let's hear from some of your colleagues then on because it's important to get that in agreement. We don't want any confusion about what the responsibilities of that position are.
So personally, I think that the role is really a facilitative one. But as far as the specifics are concerned, they're all listed in the board bylaws. And I think that, for me anyway, it's very important for people to, part of order is following the rules. And I think what happens sometimes is and I feel like the rules, and this could be me as a lawyer, this could be me as the son of police officers. Like, I feel that generally speaking, the rules are there to protect us. And so I follow them, and I think when people don't follow them, it causes disorder. And so i- in, in some ways, like I said, I think it's a facilitative role. I mean, I know it's a facilitative role. But in some ways, my personal opinion doesn't really matter to me. Because I think whatever is written in those board bylaws, that that's what I'm supposed to do. And I don't think, as board president, and I don't think that I'm supposed to do anything past that. And I think that if I ever do something, I don't think I have, but I think if I ever do something past that, I think it's fair to call me on that. And then at the same time, if people don't like what's in the board bylaws, then I think it's the board's prerogative to change the board bylaws. But until that happens, I'm going to do what's in the board bylaws.
Out of, out of those bylaws, what, what strikes you as particularly important?
I mean, it's a, like a page law. So, you know, there's not like necessarily one thing that like sticks out to me. But like I said, I really do think if anything, you know, it's a facilitative thing. So like, I'll give you an example. Like prior to this board meeting, I mean, prior to this board, so prior to me becoming board president, I talked a lot more in meetings than I currently do. And I talk less now, I ask less questions. A big reason, and that's even before we started trying to limit the questions. But a big reason for that is because my main role is not to talk. It's to facilitate communication, whether that's with the superintendent or anybody, anybody that's sitting up there on the dais in the meeting. So I don't talk as much, because I can't run a meeting if I'm running my mouth all the time. So that goes back to me and the facilitative process. But that's, that's really it. Honestly, you know, I, I just want people to follow the rules. And if people don't like the rules, change them. And then I'll follow those. That's really how I see things.
I hear from your colleagues and starting with you, Leslie, of what, what, you know, you've been in the position now for a few months and stuff. What do you see as the role of the board president? And I want to take individuals out of this and talk a little bit more abstractly about the function of the office, which Mr. Phillips has characterized as carrying out the bylaws of the district and serving in a facilitative manner to move the work of the board and the district forward. So let's start with you, Leslie, and see. Are those consistent with your expectations of the role? Are there any changes you'd like to see?
Yeah, so I do very much like 99%, 100% agree with what President Phillips said. It is a facilitator, a facilitated role. The board president is responsible for running the meetings. The board president does act as a facilitator to make sure other board members are informed, have materials that they need, may facilitate in training of certain sorts and to participate in agenda setting. Are the, are the two big, are the two big, are the two big ones. As far as our bylaws, I've said this before, and I will say it again. They need a rework desperately. They do need to be brought in line with the Governance Handbook, which is, which also needs a rework. So there is board work that needs to be done in modernizing and aligning those documents and cleaning them up.
What, when's the last time the bylaws in Governance Handbook was? Because those are important documents. We, we, Sandy and I absolutely get that. Are there a process for updating those regularly? Or they just got it done and then they, they're there and?
So what I have observed, and I, I don't, I'm not an expert in this, but from what I've observed is that there have been piecemeal updates. Either, you know, I, I don't really know what has brought those forward, but there have certainly been some piecemeal updates. And I don't have the Governance Handbook in front of me, but I believe we're probably running on a copy that's at least five or seven years old. It might even be longer.
Okay. Okay.
So that's that's kind of stuff I excel in, so I do have intention of.
Yeah, you do. You, you're really good at that. Trustee Christian?
Yeah.
Role of the board president?
Yeah, it's to facilitate, to, to oversee that everything runs decently and in order. And, and, and making sure that we have a flow and a governance of, of a flow of, of, of the board meetings. And so and my understanding is that the the pre, the board president or the person that's in that keeps everybody together and that we stay to the task. And that's pretty much.
Is that moving in that direction in a satisfactory manner for you?
We all are moving or growing. And so we all are pushing. So so yeah. So we just had to, we, we all are pushing, you know, to continue to in, we, we all are pushing in the same direction. So yeah.
Okay. Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Yeah, I mean, I agree with my colleagues. The only thing that I would add is that the board president sometimes has to message decisions done by the full board. That can happen by both the superintendent and the president. Sometimes he's our quote unquote speaker on behalf of us to community or the press, as long as we agree to that or agree to the messaging. Apart from that, I, I agree with what my colleagues have said about being a facilitating facilitator, collaborating with the clerk and superintendent in agenda setting. Yeah.
And what kinds of issues? From your perspective, in this, this is a general question for everybody. Is it important for the board to? I need to check with my colleagues before I say this, do this, whatever, because the board really does need to have the and has the authority to like represent the board into the public and answer inquiries from the press. And there's a lot of things that you have to do on the fly as a board president, not all of which are comfortable, but that just goes with the, with the territory on it. But at the same time, you work with four other people. Are there subjects and things where before we do this or take this action, we need to share it with each other and kind of test the water, keeping in mind the Brown Act and all, all the restraints that it opposes?
Would you like me?
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead, President Phillips. I'll go after President Phillips.
Well, I guess two things. So for me recently, I really haven't been making statements. I have in the past. And I, you know, and generally when I've made statements, you know, it's, you know, it's been my personal opinion about things. But you're right in that I have a larger kind of role than I've had in the past. But recently, I've actually been kind of quiet. And things that have been coming up, I've really been trying to refer them to the superintendent's office. Because I, I think that traditionally, we've had, I don't want to say traditionally, we have had very strong presidents, you know, in the past. And what I really would like to have happen is that the community and the staff really look to the superintendent more so than they have in the past. And I realize that means that in some ways I have to take kind of a backseat and be, like I was saying a little earlier about not talking as much in meetings, for example, but be a little less maybe assertive than I have been in the past. So people feel more comfortable following Dr. Hurst. But, 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 but then in addition to that, not saying it would never come up, that I would not speak to somebody in the press, I have in the past. But I've been trying to refer those things. And I can't really, and you said this, like, I can't like legally poll people. So, yeah. And so I think when I am, and I don't actually do this very often. I can't think of a time where I, I have actually just said, you know, to the press, I'm speaking for the board. But if I were to do that, and we had not had any kind of conversation about it at all, I would have to say that. That, you know, hey, you know, we haven't discussed this before. Or if we have discussed it as a board, it would be me trying to figure out if there was some kind of consensus and then, you know, our vote, and then repeating that back.
Okay. I, I have to share a humorous experience in my life with you based on what you said. And that's when I left the Wampeke Unified School District. One of our board members did a large cartoon for me. And we were all sitting there at the board table. And each of us had a little quote over our heads in the cartoon of something we were noted for saying and something like that. But over the board president's head was the, with a little circle with the comment, "They made me board president, so I wouldn't talk so much." Got to fix up a little bit. Because that hap, I have seen that happen so much. When you move into the role of board president, that's a whole different set of responsibilities. And, and you have to keep the board together. You have to, you know, make sure the meetings, the people are heard. And it's just, and you have to have, you, you just put a different lens on, right? You know, when you're, when you're looking at what you do and what you don't do and stuff. Trustee Smith-Voltz, your thoughts on the role of the board president and what's working and what we can do to make it better? Where we should collaborate, where we shouldn't, and all that?
I think it's all from our bylaws for, from our board bylaws, 91, 9121, it's operational. You know, the board president calls the meeting at the appointed time. That's an operation. That's something you do. The board president announces the business that's supposed to come before the board in its proper order. That's operational. That's what you do. I think if we stick to the operational and the policy that's in place, we'll be fine. I think that the issue comes when we go outside of these 17, 17 bylaws that they're asking for. I think that, to your second question that you asked about what does a board president say in the press and all of that thing? The rule of thumb for me is very simple. If we haven't talked about it, voted about, voted on it and made a decision about it, then it shouldn't be discussed, because it's all up for discussion. So if there's something happening and we haven't made a decision about it as a board, the majority, so three or more. If we haven't made a decision about it as a board, then we need to try to stay mum. So I think that goes to not only what we say individually in the press, but what we say as a board, because when you use the word board, you're saying three or more of us have agreed to it. That's a board decision. If two people agree to it, that's not a board decision. That's two board members who have an agreement about something. But the board, we need to be clear about what the board means. The board is three of, three or more of us deciding something and giving directives about something. So I think that, I, I hope that answers the second part of your question. What I think that we need to do better at is we need to understand the terminology. When we go out as a board and we stand behind a decision or a directive that was made, we're doing that because as a board, three or more of us have agreed to something. It could be five of us, or it could be three of us. It can't be two of us and it can't be one of us. So I think for me, what I would like us to strengthen ourselves in is that idea of three or more. And that, I think, will help us. And, and here's the thing, there's been plenty of examples since December when we got elected to where two of us have thought one thing, or one of us has thought one thing. But when we go out as a board, we support what the board has said. We support it, because that's what, that's what a board does. A board has to support the decisions of the board. And I mean, and we work towards making that decision the best possible way it can be. But I think that we have to really understand that part. And I think the board president, along with the other members of the board, have to all come to that agreement.
So let, let me press back just a little bit on that. At a meeting, let's say there's a discussion topic on something that clearly there was disagreement about among the board or the public, you can pick right now, you know, issues related to COVID or things like that. What should we do? And there's disagreement. But no action is taken. Next day, the board president gets a call from the press. And he says, you know, I noticed, the press guy says, the board's really divided on this. And oh, which way you're going to go? And what are you going to do? And that, so he's called upon to represent, you know. I realize the board didn't make a decision. But there are times when you're called upon to comment on a discussion item or something happened in the district that the board member has to, is called to, there was an incident at school. Well, where's the board on this? The, the press is not always as attuned to board, individual board roles and responsibilities and how we handle that. What would be your expectation on those kinds of things where the board hasn't acted? And the board president, who is the spokesperson for the board, is called upon to say something?
So, Mr. Brown, I'm a real big proponent of transparency, so I'll be very transparent. I would tell that press person in the nicest way possible, sit down and wait. We have a policy. We have a procedure that we do, and I'm not going to jump in front of the board decision or discussion and tell you anything. Our board is having a discussion on this, and when we get to a consensus, because that's our policy of how we run a board, then I will get back to you. Or I would kick it to my superintendent or kick it to the communications. But if they're asking board, me as the board president, what I would do is I would not break my policy. I think that when you break policy, you open yourself up for inequities. You open yourself up for chaos. You open yourself up for all the other madness that comes with it. So if the board hadn't made a decision, then that means the board needs more time to discuss it. And I would tell them, check back with me later, because I'm not going to get in front of my board, because I think that's disrespectful to the other members of the board. We move as one. So we move as one, no matter how long it takes us, we move as one. That's just, that would be my answer to that.
Okay. Okay. Other thoughts from board members on this discussion? It's really important that we come to some common understanding on this and stuff. And Chris, how about from your perspective? What do you see as the, the role of the board president in handling all the responsibilities of the job?
I've been listening to all the board members, and I actually am looking at the, the bylaw 9121 right now as, as we speak. I think I hear consensus and from the board president to even what Trustee Smith-Folz was saying is that everything that's on here, from calling the meeting to order at a appointed time, all the way down to number seven, actively participating in the agenda setting process for all board meetings. I certainly believe that's the role of the board president.
Okay. Is there anything that anybody would like to see different than what's happening right now? I mean, we're all evolving and trying to learn how to work with one another and anything. And I wish, I, I think it would work better if, though in the blank, whatever that is, but I think there's general agreement on the bylaws are there. There's probably a need to upgrade those bylaws. I mean, that should be done on a regular basis every, every three to five years. And so that would furnish an opportunity for the board to revisit some of these questions and say, is this, is this what we really want? But I just want to make sure that if something is happening right now that is causing a problem, that we kind of air that in terms of a roles and responsibilities discussion. Sandy, do you have any thoughts on this?
Thank you, Jim. I, I believe I heard President Phillips mention at the beginning of his comments that he is a very, very, feels very bound to those bylaws and, and wants to abide by those. And he also said, I believe, if he steps outside of that role, rather than being the facilitator and steps outside of the role and, and speaks out of turn and not representing the majority of the board, that he welcomes he welcomes the, the voice to, to appropriately express that, that concern. Because I, I think it's important, all these comments are, are critical to the success of the district. This board is committed. This board's not going to be perfect, as no human being is perfect. But what we see is that you guys are are dedicated to improving your individual leadership and you're importantly committed to improving the collective leadership of this governance team on behalf of this, this entire school district and all the communities you serve. And most importantly, most importantly of all, every child that's entrusted to you. So I think that communication and building trusting relationships are the two factors that are going to really help this board continue to evolve to the high-functioning leadership team that they aspire to become. Communication and trusting respectful relationships are the heart of, of every effective organization and is what it's going to take to really ensure that you are able to accomplish what you've shared with us, that you want to accomplish. And that's to make sure that every single student in the entire district is served at a very, very high level. That they'll have equitable access to all resources and that they'll have the best of humanity serving them. So we hear that you are expressing that desire. And it's going to take a continual effort to ensure that you respectfully respond to each other as you've, as Mr. Phillips has asked to call each other out in the appropriate way, to help each other to continue to grow. And to know that this community that you serve has at, at your expression, has been underserved in the past. And you want to ensure that that, that is righted, that, that the ship's going to be in the right hands. And we're so thrilled for all of you that the Dr. Hurst is your, is at the helm and will help you to move this forward. So communication and relationships, trusting relationships are the foundation. So communication and relationships, trusting relationships are the foundation.
I- i- if there's something not going. In the right direction in this regard, when somebody is um, maybe uh, not doing something that. You would expect would happen, it's important that you have a process for dialoguing about that and talking with one another. And saying, you know, that's just not working for me and help me understand this and maybe I'm seeing it differently than you do and. But the board president clearly has some significant responsibilities. To represent the board and to run meetings and facilitate things and everything like that. And uh, I don't know, in in our work with with all of you and with Mr. Phillips, who we've worked with the longest probably. Um, all of you are conscientious about doing the right thing. And if something isn't working, you kind of wanna know from each other and uh, see if we can get it moving in the right direction.
Jim, one other uh, comment about me. It from from our work with you, we've been by your side um, for quite a long time. I don't know if it was November when we first. Um, became a part of your world. But there was to some degree or another, at least the perception of of a void of leadership. And that's a very dangerous thing. So when that happens, um, things become very dysfunctional. And somehow somebody's gotta be able to provide some kind of leadership. So I think that's in the past. I wanna say that I I think that to think, I know that that is in the past. So everybody is able now to be in their lane and be. True to their, to the roles that you guys i- in which you serve. So Dr. Hurst. Is providing absolute leadership. And you're in a good place and you'll be in a much, much better place in the future. Because it's certainly not uh, not where you all want it to be right now, but there's a path forward. Jim?
Yeah, I I sent you an article a little bit, but it talked about the three major responsibilities of a board president. Uh, to represent the Board of Education. Uh, and there are a whole variety of situations in which that is likely to occur. You know, and and I'll just cite one example. When there's a serious incident in the district. Uh, it's important that there just be one, one person and not five people offering different opinions on how we should handle this. I I think trustee Smith Folds, as you said, the board hasn't even taken action on any of this, so. Uh, speaking for the board as a whole is always a little bit of a challenge, but the the board president is going to get called upon. Uh, if something goes awry or some major, you know, uh. Something happens at the national level, you know, the CDC all of a sudden mandates mask for kids in school. Board president's gonna get a call on that. And uh, the response is, I don't know what we're gonna do. That's not an appropriate response. Yes, so while we're working closely together with our colleagues, we're, you know, working with the superintendent, we know this is a serious issue, so. It's it's a challenging role and uh, the the thing about it is each of you, probably in the course of your. Career on the board is going to have to fulfill that role. And uh, don't kind of keep that in mind as you kind of all work through this. One comment that was mentioned, uh, I'm not sure who said this, but. Um, about representing personal opinion versus the board and where the board is. This is a hard one and it seemed maybe seems simpler than it seems, but. My experience and I know Sandy's has been, when you're the superintendent and you're on the board. And people see you in the community, you are no longer a parent. You are no longer a teacher. You are not, you are a member of the board of education. And you represent that board whether you want to or not. And people look to you individually, how you respond, as how the whole board is. Now, we know that's not true, that the board has five people with different opinions, superintendent is different. But when you visit a school or when you talk to some of the people, you're, you got a different hat on. And it's important to realize that even though that's an uncomfortable hat to wear sometimes. It's important to realize that how people see you, you are a member of the board. You are the superintendent in the district. And uh, I had an embarrassing incident happen in my past. And I'll share it with you because I was coaching youth soccer. And I was a fairly volatile coach and a pretty activist. And uh, at this time, I was a a principal in the di- in the neighboring district. And I did something that I I immediately wished I hadn't done. But somehow the word got back to the district and I was cautioned and said, you know, you just weren't Jim Brown. Coach of the soccer team. You were the principal of X school. And people saw you as the principal, not as the coach of the team and everything like that. So realize when you say something publicly or represent it, you are always representing your colleagues on the board. And the leadership of your school district. That's a hard hat. That's a hard one to get used to, but. Don't you think, Sandy, that it is different to realize that how people see us? In the community and everything. We're always a board member, we're always a superintendent. You can't say, oh, I'm gonna take off my superintendent hat. I'm just talking as a parrot tonight. No, you got the board hat on right on your head.
I I could agree wholeheartedly. And and the other thing that makes it very difficult is. The constituents that you serve in your particular trustee areas. May not um, always understand that your primary responsibility is to the. To every single child and throughout the entire district. And that you can't just serve the people who voted for you, but you serve every single child. That's the most important role of the board in working with the superintendent. To ensure that the system is ever growing in high functionality. That way, all students are gonna really be. The beneficiaries of a a high functioning system, equitable access to all. Quality learning.
Demetra, I'm sorry, trustee Gonzalez.
Thanks, uh, trustee Reckler was was first, actually. I I'll go after.
Okay, I'm sorry, trustee Reckler, I didn't see your hand.
So just a brief comment on the bylaws and the governance handbook. I do believe that Dr. Hurst's equity analysis is going to take a glance through those. And I have some suggestions. We'll come back and I do volunteer to take that project. Reveals itself. Thank you.
And and we have some examples we can share from other districts as as need.
Trustee Reckler, you're um, you're raking up a little bit. It might be helpful if you. Only keep your audio on and not your video, because that'll help with your your um. Your connection.
Thanks. Uh, trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Um, yeah, I mean, I think that.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been a good internet day, so.
I think that uh, miss, I I call you Sandy, so I'm Miss Thorntons and sorry. Put it really well. I think that we all had to fulfill a lot of roles uh, since we took over, roles that. We probably shouldn't have had to do because there was a vacuum of leadership, right? Um, and a vacuum of of um, what did I write? Well, you know, a vacuum of 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 uh, of need, right? So I think that we all did. Maybe not all of us, but I know I ended up doing some. Things that maybe doesn't fall in the role of the board member, right? And I think that that's happened in many levels. Um, and we've had this discussion and I think that with Dr. Hurst, that's gonna slowly change so that we can really concentrate on. What our role is around policy and and approval, things of his of his uh, projects and his recommendations. Um, I think that one of the things that I do wanna ensure that we continue to do. That I haven't seen always followed in the past, not currently, but in the past by some leaderships has been. Uh, that we ensure that if we are uh, calling a meeting or uh. Uh, doing something unexpected, that majority of us are in agreement. Um, and um, I think that. You know, just for me to put myself out there, there was one meeting this year that I didn't, that I didn't agree with. Um, and I felt that my opinion wasn't listened to, and I think I felt that majority of the board was there. Uh, but it was really hard to for us to gauge, and I think that probably for a president, board president as well. Because we didn't always trust the messenger, it should have been the superintendent, right? Um, um, and and I'm being very uh, direct at the moment so that we can put it all out there. I think that moving forward, my hope of the one thing that I believe we could do better. Is that communication around direction um, is done through the superintendent. So that he always knows where the majority of the board sits. Um, because for us, it's really hard for me to gauge where people sit without having a conversation with them. And we have the Brown Act, right? So we can't always gauge, and I'm sure it's not easy, it hasn't been easy for. The president or even the clerk um, to always know where the majority of the board is, but have had to make decisions. According to what they believe the majority is. And I don't mean decisions like policy, but I mean decisions like calling a meeting, right? Uh, but I think that now we have a superintendent that we just hired that we trust, and I believe that that should be.
Good point.
The person that always ensures that we're all in agreement, and if majority is not in agreement, I think that we all have to respect that, right? Um, so um, I think that we are in a new place because we have new leadership that we all trust. And I think that things will go back to the way it should be. Um, and I and I own that. I I I decide I wanna start with that because I know that I did. Things like. Uh, directing staff at times when I shouldn't have because I felt that I couldn't go to staff, right? Um, so I think that things will will get better, but I do wanted to ensure, I think that when you ask for feedback on. What could we do the better? I think that that's one thing that we could, ensuring that the superintendent is clear. On where the direction is coming from and that the direction is from at least minimum three of us.
Yeah, that that's a very important point. The superintendent takes direction from the board. Uh, tha- tha- that, I mean, that's almost one of, you know, your top three things. And the board, for a superintendent to be effective, the superintendent cannot be responding to five individuals. Well, I want this and somebody else wants this. On on, you know, there are always those individual situations which you can deal, which are fine. But on policy issues, on where the board is going and things that affect all the board members. The superintendent really has to have a read from the board as a whole, how to proceed. And that communication is really important, some of this. So thanks for the reminder there. Mr. Phillips?
I do just wanna say something really quick around the bylaws. So, and this is not just for me, this is for anybody who ends up being the president. The board president under the bylaws has the ability to call a special meeting. And so, um, even if. There are not three board members who wanna call a special meeting. Uh, because theoretically, well, it just, it does. The board president does have that ability. I'm not saying that I plan on calling a bunch of special meetings. Uh, I'm just going back to the idea that. Part of order, like if it was a basketball game, right? Uh, i- i- if we're all playing by the rules, the official game of basketball. You know, even if we think it wasn't a travel, you know what I mean? Or even if we think it wasn't a foul. You know, the rules are the rules. And so, you know. If anybody, if the board as a whole, and I really mean this, if the board as a whole wants to change. The rules, then change the rules. But as an individual, me, as long as I'm the board president, I'm going to follow the rules that are written on that piece of paper. Unless they're changed, and if they're changed, I promise I will follow whatever they're changed to.
Yeah, I think there's general consensus that we need to revisit those bylaws and handbooks and look at best practices and. Keep those updated and stuff. Is there any, in terms of board response, oh, I'm sorry, Jamel, go ahead. Trustee Smith.
So I think one of the things that we need to look at is the bylaws that around. Calling a meeting, but also around canceling a meeting. Cause there's nothing in the bylaws that says the board president has the purview to cancel a meeting. I may be missing it. But I'm looking through here and I don't see that. So that seems like that would not be an individual decision. But that would be a board decision, which requires the majority of the board, which is three or more. So when we go through these bylaws, I think that what we, because we've had. Experience since December now, we can now go through and shape these bylaws with a little bit more. Clarity and be very kind of specific, like the board president on number. I just looked at it, uh. Number five, under the second session, calling such meetings of the board as he or she may deem necessary, giving notice as prescribed by law. That's the one I think you're referring to, Mr. Phillips, Mr. President Phillips, but I don't see anything in here that says the board president has. The unilateral decision-making ability to cancel a meeting. So when we go back and we look at board bylaws, we need to be very clear on what should happen from a board president and what should not. And that's going and seeing if we wanna keep number five, or if we want to add, make it very clear. About number five or how we want to kind of conduct ourselves as a board. So what I would hope is that we can look at these bylaws sooner than later. So we can get them ratified and approved or whatever the process is.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. And I think President Phillips has hand up. He was before me. I don't know if that's be from before or. Um, yeah, I mean, I actually do agree with what both President Phillips and trustee Smith Folds said. Um, I mean, if it's in our bylaws, in our bylaw, right? And I do agree with President Phillips. I think that we have to revisit it. Because I do think that when calling, I mean, we're getting into like a specific topic, right? Calling special meetings, which is the issue I I personally brought up, but. I think that if if the board president should have the right to call a special board meeting. Because it could, it could probably be about something very important, urgent, right? Like a tentative agreement with the organizations. An emergency power that needs to be given to sprint, whatever it is. But I think that if we are all in, if majority of us are in agreement, it shouldn't happen, because it could lead to negative effects. The the policy should say something around that, right? As of, if majority of the board actually doesn't agree with it, it should be canceled or postponed until there's understanding, right? Um, so I do agree, I think that it needs to be revisited so that these powers that were that were written for a reason and are maintained. But then as we have experienced them, right, we also edit them and go through them. Um, and I think that that would be, that's a good idea. So, and I would also more than happy volunteer. I'm sure all of us would, but. Um, I I I think that obviously we're getting into a mini show of once and one example, but I think that that's where. I don't, I that's where I guess that's been a a one piece of disagreement. For example, on this one special meeting that we're talking about. Majority of us didn't agree, right? But it was still called. Um, so what happens in those situations, right? Uh, because a majority of us, including the both superintendents, felt that it was actually gonna cause more problems and it wasn't gonna help anything, right? So moving forward, I think that we have to look at those specific issues and figure out. Do we need to write policy or do we do we not?
Until the policy can be uh, reviewed and and revised, might it be helpful for the board president and the clerk? To connect before a decision like that is made, so that way at least there's um. The board, I should say, the board president, the clerk, and importantly, the superintendent. Connect in in matters of urgency to be able to to move forward, so that way there's um. There's time at least to to discuss among the amongst the superintendent, board president and the clerk. There there might be a a an effective stopgap until the revision is completed. President Phillips?
So. Currently, under. Our. Current bylaws. The superintendent and the board clerk and the president are all in agenda setting. Anyway, so every time we have a meeting. To set an agenda, theoretically, all of those people should be there every single time. The only special meetings that have been called, that I remember calling since I've been the board president. Is special meetings related to COVID. And one special meeting related to uh, interest-based marketing. Which frankly, wasn't even my idea. It was the idea of staff, the interest-based bargaining. So those are all of the special meetings that I can think of. And yes, COVID is a very and has been a very controversial. And hot topic issue. I don't. See, we've already as a board voted on what, you know, the. Uh, I don't know what word I'm trying to look for. We've already voted on our policy. um, I don't know what word I'm trying to look for. We've already voted on our policy, I guess, for return to school. That's the word I'm used looking for. So, uh, there's not really anything that I can see right now for me to actually be calling a special meeting. Um, and then the labor stuff, I mean, I don't, there's not anything that I can foresee, but I really meant it. I'm going to follow the rules. I don't have any reason to call a special meeting, but I really meant it. I'm not, and, and this could be what gets me ousted or whatever. But like, I'm not creating like side agreements on the bylaws. Like if people want to change the bylaws, I am more than happy for that to be on an agenda. I am more than happy to, when it changes, to do exactly what they say. But you have the bylaws for a reason. Uh, I don't, like I said, I don't even see a reason for me to necessarily call a special meeting. Uh, I don't have any special meetings planned. Uh, but as long as it's in the bylaws, it's in the bylaws. And this is where, and this is where I think people get in trouble because the bylaws are the bylaws. Just follow them. And if you don't like them, change them.
Maybe it just needs a little bit more specificity and clarification. Very healthy to have this conversation. Trustee Gonzalez Hoy had mentioned something just a bit ago, um, and, uh, very kindly and humbly, uh, said that maybe he was getting out of his lane a little bit. Because there, there was, um, uh, of a large degree of perception that, that there was a void of leadership. So important to remember that, um, the board has one employee and only one employee, and that's the superintendent. And the superintendent has responsibility for operations and the board does not have the responsibility for operations. It's not the purview of the board to get into the weeds or to contact staffer, try to direct staffer, any, any of that sort of thing. And, and to always remember that it's the board majority, three or more to direct the superintendent, that one individual board member can't say to a superintendent, I want you to do this or that. It's not appropriate and it really needs to be a, a board discussion. And it's something that, um, that will continue to evolve because it's, it's in the best interest of West Country-Crossed Unified to have, to have that evolving, um, process continued. I think President Phil, yeah, President Phillips and, and, uh, Trustee Smith Fuld. And I think Jimmy, you're, you're back on.
Yes, I am.
Okay, alrighty, so.
My audio went dead and I finally figured out why.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Phillips and then Jamel are gonna speak. I'll let you get back to your lead role here.
I, I would like to ask a question of the superintendent because I feel like, and it's okay. I mean, we're in a retreat and I get the purpose of a retreat, but I feel like there's all this conversation around the role of the president. And then there's all this conversation about a single board member should not be given the president, I mean, the superintendent direction by his or herself. And I feel like the implication is that if that's happening, frankly, it's me that's doing it. Uh, and I, you know, and so I just want to ask, I know my answer, right? As to whether I'm doing that, because I feel like it's, even though it's not being said, but if you talk for 30 minutes about the role of the board president and half of that is people should not, individuals should not be directing the superintendent by themselves. You know, the obvious implication is that I'm the one that's doing that. And so I just want to point blank for all five people, you know, say this, and then I'm gonna ask Dr. Hurst and then I'm just be quiet. But I am not given the superintendent's side directions. I am not, when we're together saying one thing and then when we're by ourselves, when I'm with the superintendent, talking to him by myself, hey, really do this, or hey, go do it this way. I'm not doing that. I have never been doing that with him. Um, when I voted to hire Superintendent Hearst, um, I voted to hire Superintendent Hearst because I honestly, in my heart, believed he was the best person for the job. And I honestly, in my heart, believe that, uh, we didn't know what the hell we were doing. And when I say we, I mean, me too. And so this is not a space, and it never has been a space for me to, you know, act like regardless of what people want to say about me or calling on the phone and he thinks he's a king and he thinks he's a ruler and he, he's not supposed to be reigning over. Regardless of what people want to try to say about me, I don't do that to the superintendent. And Dr. Hearst, I'm just gonna ask you point blank and you can answer however you want to answer. But when we're, nobody else is around, am I secretly directing you how to run things or secretly directing you how to uh, operate or, 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 or am I secretly giving you the orders for you to, to tell staff what to do? Am I doing those things?
I'll say that, um, that, that you have not, uh, come out and said, um, or directed me, but this is what I will share. Um, and I'll say this since we're in, um, confines of a retreat. Um, what I've asked the board, entire board to, to look at is uh, the whole concept of the what and the how and just the implications of um, everything that you say and everything that you email to me. But I will say, um, one, I've not had any direction, but I will say that there's been certain things that have been said by almost every board member, um, where I have felt that maybe based on the past and some of the emails that I've gotten and received, they can be perceived as, you know, a board member has like their idea of the way things should go and, and run. Um, and sometimes I feel that coming through an email and it feels almost directive. So that's the conversation I really want to have with the board and to be very clear about is when you put things in the email, is there underlying message that this is a direction we want you to go? Or um, are you just giving me feedback? So I think that's one of the things I need clarity around. There, there are a few, um, situations and I did send an email to all of you and I said, I'd be happy to share with you individually. And I think that's appropriate, um, to do that individually, but I will say that I've not received anything, um, direct from you, President Phillips, um, about directing me at the work, but what I will say that there has been um, instances where it has felt operational. So direction is one thing, but operational is another thing as well that I've asked the board to think about.
So it's most, most board members, not, uh,
Yeah.
And, and it was, you know, just as I mentioned a little bit ago, as, uh, Trustee Gonzalez Hoy, so kindly brought up himself that he got out of his lane before. Um, but there's no need for that anymore. You know, there was that, that vacuum that people, um, experienced and, and felt. And so it unfortunately is, is sort of a natural thing to happen when there's a vacuum of leadership, but that's no longer the case. And, and I think it's important, um, for President Phillips to know it's, it's not, um, about you directing the superintendent. It's about everybody really being mindful about staying in their lane and, and being the policymakers that you are elected to be and, and to working as a, um, collective team to clear the, clear the road for the superintendent.
But Sandy, I think it really is, for you, that's not what it's about. And that's not what it should be about, and that's not what I should be doing. But I have a feeling that for some folks, that is what it's about, that some folks really think that I'm behind the curtain pulling some kind of strings and telling Dr. Hearst what to do. And I'm not. And he just said I'm not.
Right.
And I think when we keep, what people want to keep having all these discussions about the power of the board president is because they think for some reason that that's what I'm doing. And I'm really not doing that. And I, I can't say it any other way that I'm not, he just said it on TV. Unless both of us is lying, I'm not doing that.
Well, from our perspective, it wasn't that you're directing the superintendent. It's, it's the, um, role of the board president, you know, and, you know, as, as we just heard, everybody has had to some degree or another, their, um, issues of getting out of their lane. Not, not just you, but almost everybody. So it's, I, I don't, I don't think it's any, we shouldn't try to take anything real personally, but really just think as a collective team, how do we get better? Trustee Smith Fuld.
So agenda setting was mentioned and I'm invited at the purview of the president to attend agenda setting. That's kind of what it is in our bylaws, like agenda setting is bylaws, the president and the superintendent. And the clerk is invited in to those agenda settings. When we're at agenda setting and we come to an agreement or we're talking or my opinion is asked or what have you. And then the next day, something that we discussed on agenda setting is no longer in that what we said is no longer what we said. Then that's where for me, it feels like a unilateral move. I'm in a collective having a conversation, but when a decision is made, I'm on the outside of it. So this is where for me, it gets a little bit, um, troublesome and it feels like direction is given because we talked about something. We had an agreement about something. And then when it was time to see that something, it was completely different than what we, we agreed upon. So for me, that is a unilateral decision-making thing to happen. So it then turns around and says, okay, well, why am I at agenda setting? Am I at agenda setting just to check a box? Or am I at agenda setting to produce and to give my feedback and my opinion about something? Or am I at agenda setting to learn? This is how agenda setting goes. So if you are in that role of board president, one day you will know how it looks on the inside. So for me as the clerk, and I think that that was in our agenda too, I need clarity about what exactly my role is because according to the bylaws, I, according to our bylaws of the clerk in 9123, the one that I'm having, um, the most issue with is seven, participate in agenda saving, participate in agenda setting. That's one, participation. What does participation mean? Does participation, does participation mean that my voice is equally valued? Or does participation mean you get to show up and watch what's happening? So that's one question. The second part about where as the clerk, I have done self-evaluation is on number eight, it says, support the president to run timely and effective board meetings, the Board of Education meetings. So we have had issues as a board with timing. We have, having the time, timing of the meeting. And I think when we begin to talk more at this retreat about public comment and about questions and all of that, it's hard for me to support some, it's hard for me to support a decision like you can only ask four questions or I'm asking you to only ask a, a maximum of four questions. That's hard for me to support. It's hard for me to support because I think that limits the role of the board, which one of it is to have a robust dialogue so you can give clear direction. So I have a couple of things that I would like to talk about around one, the role of the clerk and specifically about participation in agenda setting. What is that clearly about? And two, how does a clerk support the president to run timely and effective Board of Education meetings? If there's a disagreement about what effectiveness looks like?
Well, I, I would think participation means contributing, not just observing. And that you come out of a meeting, you work through a process together to share opinions. Um, the final agenda has, I would think is the responsibility of the superintendent and the board president. Uh, something could happen from meeting A to the next day that might change something. I don't, I don't, I don't know the specifics on this. But I think clearly participation means contributing ideas, being part of the decision-making process. But that something can change and somebody has to make the call on that. And maybe the answer is just if something changes that it's communicated and why?
I would concur with that.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Brown. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, I just said I concur. I agree with with that, um, perception of what participation means.
And then could you help me with the, or help us as a board come to an understanding around um, number eight on the board bylaws for the clerk, which is support the president to run timely and effective Board of Education meetings? Can you give me a little bit of idea of what you think that that means and how that should actually look?
Where, where do you, um, I should know this, but where, where do the clerk and the vice and the president sit? Are you next to each other?
We've, we're on Zoom now, so
Yeah.
Uh, we have not met as a entire board
Yeah.
in person at one location. Um, so I cannot answer that. I do not remember exactly what it used to look like with the previous board, President Phillips or someone else would probably have that answer, but I'm not sure. But we do sit at a, um, kind of a U shape. I know that from Dejounte Middle School has like a U.
Okay. Well, as a matter of protocols, and then when we're back to live meetings and everything, I think it's important that superintendent, the president and the clerk sit in proximity. So that if something isn't working at the meeting, at party A can pass party B a note and, uh, say, you know, maybe we should, uh, let's try to cut this off or let's try to, maybe we should allow some more time for this discussion or something like that. So in addition to being participating and planning the meeting, I think it's important that the president is so focused on, on, has to be focused on running the meeting, you know, something is, I, I almost think that the, the clerk's role and to set the superintendent's is kind of watch the audience, you know, what's going on? Is there anything that needs I, I can help with and just pass a note or something like that. So that's one thing that means to me, Sandy.
I, I'd agree with that. I also, um, it's very tricky when you talk about, uh, efficiently run meetings. The meetings have to be efficiently run. I think it's extremely disrespectful to the community to have meetings that are outrageously late. You know, past 10 o'clock is getting to be outrageously late, in my opinion. You know, board needs to go into one o'clock or ridiculous hours like that. You cannot do your best thinking when people are just physically and emotionally exhausted that way. Conversely, it's also disrespectful to, i- if, if the community feels like they, they don't have ample time to be heard. Now that's a very, very tricky, uh, and fine line there because if, if the board is working really, really hard and it is up to the board president and it's a, the, you know, heavy responsibility to try to move things along. But it's, it has to be done so carefully. And at this point in time, in, in your, um, progress of this district, there's rightful reason for this community to, to have concerns as you all agreed. You know, it, it's not as if you're not in sync with what the community has been saying, what we heard, Jim and I heard through those extensive community input sessions were, were the same issues that you guys had expressed yourselves that you were committed to trying to address. It's not an easy fix. It takes time. And it takes a very highly effective governance team to work through that. And it takes patience and the community is not always going to be patient. And you got to understand that. You know, they're going to be very, very frustrated at times and you just have to understand that, but try to move things along as efficiently as possible. And yet at the same time, be respectful of the need for the community to share their, their thinking. But you don't want to have meetings till 11 o'clock, 12 midnight, one o'clock. That's absolutely ridiculous. That looks like a sign of a dysfunctional district. If they can't get their business done in a more appropriate timeframe.
Here's something you won't find in writing anywhere, but I think can be an important role for the clerk is, and I'm going to call this the conscience of the board. You know, this is sort of the Jiminy Cricket rule. But kind of because the board president has, has to be so focused on getting the meeting moving forward, paying. But how are we behaving as a board? And did we follow our protocols? And did we do that? And maybe it's not the clerk, maybe it's somebody else, but I think that's an important, and there are so many boards that don't have that. And it doesn't have, so, uh, I'm going to give a, an example. If a board member and hopefully this doesn't happen, starts to berate a staff member, that's, that's not cool. And, uh, there's, there probably is a better way to go on that. So somebody kind of calling that out, maybe just saying, hey, wait a minute, let's, you know, kind of resettling it. So somebody kind of calling that out, maybe just saying, hey, wait a minute, let's, you know, kind of resettling it. But I don't know, it's, it's just a thought on my part, Jamal, but that there, it, it is important for the board to have kind of a conscience that monitors how are we meeting our protocols? And maybe at the end of the meeting, maybe even saying, here's what I observed this meeting. And what we did well, and here's something that, you know, maybe we could do better on. So just a thought.
So Mr. Brown, I would love as a group, when we revisit the bylaws, which I would like to put on a agenda very quickly is revisiting bylaws. I actually think that's very important to have the conscious of the board, or at least to have a the ability to self reflect after every meeting, every other meeting, some way of having a way of resetting or recalibrating, or just making sure that we're doing what we need to do. And I think one of the things that we're all hearing is that if you have a lengthy, if you have a lengthy board meeting, then there has to be some adjustments that need to happen. For me, that adjustment is not limiting the voice of the board or the public, but limiting what's on the agenda. Do you see what I'm saying? Because if you know that you have a very verbose board and this board happens to be verbose, we happen, we, we do.
Yeah.
And as Sandy, as Ms. Thorson has said, it's because we're coming from a community that distrust and we're sitting on the dais to add that trust into the community. To be examples of what that trust looks like. One step was to hire a trustworthy superintendent. That's the first step. The second step is to make sure that we are asking those questions so the superintendent can voice that out to the community. So that we can all be lockstep with each other, moving forward. And there's an investment part of that that happens. And some of that has to come from the dais to where it can't just be, we're asking questions behind the scene and then it's not getting out to the public. Some of that work has to be from the dais. And one way for me to make sure that that work is from the dais transparent, transparently is to ask pertinent questions, but it's also to keep them succinct, to forecast them ahead of time. Hey, this is what I'm going to ask. So they can then have a succinct answer coming back. So then the community can understand this is what we're dealing with, talking about, this is where we're going to move. And making sure that the community has an opportu- opportunity to give us feedback. Now, we all know that we are having a, what all of our governing books say about the board, you're having a board meeting in public. But because you're having a board meeting in public, it is us doing our due diligence to make sure that the public is caught up to what we're talking about. And the public understands that they have an investment in the way that the district is run also. They had an investment because they voted for us on the dais, but we also have an accountability and responsibility to them not to make unilateral decisions. We are the voice of the people sitting here on the dais. So we have to be able to hear the voice of the people and we also have to be able to speak our questions, concerns and comments to our only employee, which is the superintendent. And we get a chance to do that in public from the diets.
Right.
So thank you so much. Again, colleagues, I would love to have some, a discussion around conscious of the board at some point, wherever we put it. I would love to have that kind of discussion in our bylaws. Thank you.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I did want to touch base on what Dr. Hurst said about our emails and how we communicate. I do think that, that all of us have to be careful and I'm going to talk about myself because I'm not referring to anyone, any of my colleagues specifically. There have been times where I have emailed our current superintendent, past superintendent, saying, my opinion is this. And that could come off as direction, right? If I'm like, I believe you should have PDs hybrid or in Zoom, right? I literally just said that to Dr. Hurst the other day, right? And I think that in reflection, right? That could sound as a directive, right? If my boss was calling me and saying something like that, I would probably think it's a directive and I would probably try to make it happen, right? So I think that we have to be very careful now because through email or our communications, it might come off that way. And I do want to, but I want to be reflective of that. Because I might not think it's direction. I might just be like, oh, I'm just giving him my, my opinion, right? As a board member, as a member of the community, but it might be taken differently, right? So I, I do, I'm, I'm committed, committing to thinking about it that way. And I would encourage, you know, my colleagues of that, if that's something you're doing, I would encourage you to do the same. Because I do think that maybe that is where things are, right? Because I have heard this before, Mr. Duffy gave me that feedback once, when I called him and I told him something, he told me, are you, are you directing me individually? And I said, oh, shoot, right? Like, I'm not directing you, right? I'm just giving you my opinion. So I did want to touch base in that, Dr. Hurst, that I think that moving forward. First, please, I do welcome calling me out. I am a very reflective person. But secondly, if I'm emailing you individually, know that it's my opinion, but I'm not directing you, right? Because I ultimately a hundred percent believe directives should be from three out of the five of us or at le- at least, right? Or five out of the five, right? But if we ever cross those lines, right? I do think that the superintendent is in awkward position where he has to react to people's opinions. And that's dangerous territory, right? And we are very opinionated people, right? All of us for good reasons, right? That's why we're here. And I'll be the first one to say I have opinions on literally everything, right? So I, I just want to put it out there to be solution oriented on, on the current topic. And obviously, Dr. Hurst, they bring up an important point, right? And I do think that we have had to do a lot more of that in the recent past, right? And we have a new pathway. So it's important that we reflect on new path moving forward. That's it.
That's a sign of a real healthy board evolving. That's beautiful. I think Mr. Phillips has his, President Phillips has his hand up.
I just want to say one thing about regarding what Mr. Brown just said. So a large part of this conversation. All of our conversations really has been about, you know, people knowing what their roles and responsibilities are and people staying in their lane. And honestly, I feel, Mr. Brown, a lot of what you just said regarding the role of the clerk is actually the role of the board president. As far as managing the meetings, if people are acting inappropriately in meetings. That is something that the board president is actually supposed to be doing as part of running a decent and orderly meeting. Now, if I go in there and start acting crazy, right? Obviously, somebody needs to say something, right? But just as a general, you know, matter of fact, and I'm only bringing this up because if one thing is not clear, we do have a problem staying in our lane. And we do have a problem as a whole doing what our role is. And I feel like you just told another board member really to do part of what managing a meeting is, is involved. And I think what you just said is setting something up for future conflict.
Well, I didn't, I, I, I didn't mean to do that. I mean, my intention was that somebody, and I understand it couldn't be the board president, but sometimes I see the board president getting, I mean, there's so much to do at a board meeting. And sometimes that particular role of being a conscience of the board and the protocols can get lost. And my, my concern would be more that somebody on the board, and I understand the role of the board president, that, that could be that. But if it's not the right time or something like, is, can the clerk or somebody else fill that role? My concern is more that somebody is doing that. You know, okay, rather than a specific person, but somebody is paying attention. How are we doing as a board? Are we following our protocols? And that's where the, and if it's board president, great. The board president feels like I just can't have the time to do that. Maybe could ask the clerk to do that or somebody else on the board. It's not a comfortable role to fill, as, as you can imagine.
It, it, it is, but like, there's like, if you look at our, and again, I'm going back to the bylaws. This board could change the bylaws however they want. But what you, the bylaws don't say anything about being the conscious of the board.
No, they don't.
But it does specifically talk about managing the meetings, you know, and I'm paraphrasing, you know, in a respect. Basically, the things that you were just describing are in the board bylaws under the role of the president. And it's not that it has to be me, but what I'm saying is that one day I won't be the board president. And this, just like everybody has to stay in their lane when it comes to the superintendent. When people also should stay in their lane when it comes to the roles on the board because and this is not for me. When anybody else is the president, it's, it'll be the same issue as well. That's what I'm just saying. Everybody really does need to know the bylaws and follow them. And if we don't like them as a group, we need to change them.
Yeah. All I'm saying is just be sure as a board, my advice is that somebody is assuming responsibility for this. And if the president is comfortable with it, that, that somebody else out there kind of owns that responsibility.
It can be helpful when you revise those board laws to consider being more specific about the role of the clerk. So that way the board can have, so to speak, a wingman or a wingwoman to help out because it is a huge responsibility. And, and there are times in open session meetings when you'll have some very, very heated debate. And it's helpful to have a wingman or wingwoman, you know, and, and that would be the role of the clerk, you know, so. But it's not stated specifically that way now. So the specificity would be helpful. Trustee Smith Folds.
I think one of the things that I want to make sure that Dr. Hurst knows a little bit of my style. I'm never going to give a directive to you because I'm one person. That's, that's point blank period. If I'm having a conversation on an email, it's literally just me telling or asking a question. And I'm trying to get to the point to where I'm just asking questions. You, to the, to you through an email, like, have you heard of X, Y and Z? Did you hear about, you, you understand what I'm saying? I had a parent contact me about that. Are you aware of this? So I'm trying to be very clear. Because I don't ever want it to sound like directive coming from me. But for that to happen, I need to kind of highlight and bring to the top that I'm not going to do that. I'm one person. I'm very clear that I'm only one person. And when we have our two on threes or we have our one on ones and we're having conversation, to me, it's just that you are hearing from me, the voice of my community, and you are hearing from me, my voice, but my voice is going to be very clear. This is what I believe, do you know, and I'm going to I'm going to ensure that I'm doing that by asking you if it's not used with that sentence starter. Please ask me, is this what you believe? Is this what your community is telling you? It because that's the only two voices that you should hear from me because the other voice should be from the board. So for me, you should hear, this is what I believe, or this is what my community is telling me. And then the direction should come from the board. So for me, that's where I want. I just want you to be clear because I don't want, I think that it does damage if you're not clear about what's happening because you're getting five different conversations. And if those conversations, some of them feel like directives, some of them don't, some of them feel like opinions, some of them don't. Then we are binding you to, we are making it impossible for you to do the work. Because we have board meetings twice a month. And if you are getting five different things and we only get two times out of the month to have that full discussion, then we are doing a, I believe, a disservice. Because then it's just back and forth. And I, I hired you as one of the five board members for me to get your opinion. Not another, not one other board member's opinion or not two other board members' opinion. But when I'm talking to you, I would like to know, what do you think, Dr. Hurst? What do you, as your experience and what you have gone through and what you know to be true, what do you think? When you come back to the board, you're going to bring a recommendation and that could be from any number of sources. But when I'm talking to you, I want to know specifically, what do you think? What, what is your opinion? What is, what, what is your opinion? Not even what's your recommendation, but what do you think? And then that would also help me to gather data to help say, okay, that's a different way of looking at it. I had my opinion going in. I had an idea going in. My community had an idea going in. When this comes back to the board, I'm able to hear a recommendation from the superintendent. I'm able to, to have a conversation with my fellow colleagues. And then I'm able to give direction with the expectation that it will be followed. So I think that that's where we can talk about as a board, are we in agreement that this is how it should be moving? It should be moving that when we talk to Dr. Hurst, we're getting his opinion and it's us having a conversation with him is not us giving any direction. It's us really understanding that that can't happen except from the dais. Or at least where there's three, four or five of us in agreement. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Suggestion, I know that one of the areas that we wanted to talk about tonight, I think this has been very helpful. Talking about roles and responsibilities of the board and the board president and the officers. But I also know, we also know that there, you know, that the board agreed to try something different with public communications at board meetings. And there's different feelings that we put on, how's that going? And maybe it's, it's working well, maybe not so well. I'm sure there was pushback and stuff. So I, I think that tonight we'd like to kind of where are we and what's the path forward? And trustee Gonzalez, why you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Yeah, I mean, so yeah, I'm going to provide my, my personal opinion, which is that I feel that the new system did shorten our meetings because I felt that we have gotten less public comment. I also feel that it's in the summer, so it's not always the best gauge of public comment. But I do, in reflection now, I've been getting a lot of feedback and a lot of pushback. Not just by one or two people, but by a lot of folks in different meetings I attend, they bring up public comment. And I don't think that people like our new system. Because it, trustee Reckler mentioned this in the past, in the past board meeting when we decided this, which is that it doesn't allow them to make comment after looking at the presentation from staff or hearing questions from the board. My personal opinion is that we tried the hybrid model we had mentioned at the last retreat, which is public comment at the beginning of the meeting, shorten, not an hour, but shorten. And we have ten minutes for public comment after each, after staff presentations on each item, which is shorter than what we had before. Because I think that both systems had weaknesses. And we heard pushback on both, very legit pushback on both. I do think that the public will have to ultimately be okay with one. They can't just continue to push on every single thing that we try. But I do think that there were legit issues that were brought up about transparency and inclusion of members of the community's input from this new system. So that's my personal opinion. I believe that we should try this hybrid model. At least for a few board meetings. And if none of it works, we go back to what is in our policy, which is what we were already doing anyways.
Other board members' perspectives? Trustee, oh, Mr. Phillips.
Where we were before, and I know that's not what Mr. Gonzalez is proposing right now. But where we were before, part of the issue is, in my opinion, that it was excessive. And so if we do something else, whatever it is, it needs to be less than what it was, not more. So I would like to hear what Dr. Hurst's opinion is. But I, I, I think that like our meeting should end at ten thirty at the latest. So like when Ms. Sandy was saying, like ten o'clock is starting to get ridiculous. Like I think at ten thirty at the latest, and I mean, it should be some hot and heavy issues going on that keep us until ten thirty. So if the board wants to do, try something else. I'm fine with what we're doing now. I think it did what people asked for. I think sometimes you say, you know, be careful what you ask for, but I think it did what people asked for. So I'm fine with it. But if the board wants to do something different, I don't, I just don't want it to be when we sit down at the end and look at, you know, how much public comment we're doing. It actually ends up being more than we were doing before we even started this experiment. Because I think that we were doing more public comment this year than any of the boards ever did and ever that this, this thing has existed. So that's my two cents.
Typical board meeting should be done by ten o'clock, but there are some cases that are not going to be typical, of course. But so one, one option that might be something you want to consider is if everybody has, every individual has X number of minutes to speak, but if a, a whole group of individuals are wanting to speak on the same But if a, a whole group of individuals are wanting to speak on the same topic. It might be something that you might want to consider to say, one particular topic should have a maximum of X number of minutes. 20 minutes or whatever, 15 minutes, 20 minutes, 30 minutes, whatever, for one topic. So that way, people who are wanting to speak on that one topic, you know, if, if they can pull their, their time together or, you know, just. It, it's just, uh, different ways that need to be considered about how to be, um, to honor. The community's need for input and their right for input and your desire to give them input with the ridiculousness of having meetings till midnight. Or, you know, that's just not, not okay. Trustee Smith Folds.
So for me, I would, I would like to see a hybrid form of it. But this is, and the reasons why trustee Reckler has already forecasted and trustee Gonzalez Hoy just forecasted. But one of the things that I would like to see is until trust is built. We need to make sure that we're able to hear from the community. Because there's so much in this district's history that we just don't know. I know for me particularly, it took community members to, to pull my coat tell on something so I can then ask the proper question. But I would have been able to do that, or that would have been able to be done in a meeting on the dais. If we had public comment after a presentation, then that question would have been answered. And then that problem would have been solved or clarification would have been given. I think the other thing is if we have public comment at the beginning, I would like to see us. If we set a time, so right now we have public comment, this new thing that we're trying. It was public comment for an hour, right? But your hand had to be raised at the beginning. Well, I think that that cuts the legs off from the community because what if they log in at 6:15? The meeting starts at six, you know, six o'clock, what if they log in at 6:15 and they missed their only opportunity for public comment? But if we, they should, by definition of what we're saying, have an entire hour. Do, does that make sense? So what I would like to see is if we're going to have public comment on a time. Then that entire time span is open for the public to call in, raise your hand. Make their comment or whatever, because I think that that's a part of equity. If I don't get, if I'm commuting and I don't get home to 6:30 and I log in at 6:30, then I miss my opportunity to participate in this. On this forum, I've missed a opportunity, maybe not my only opportunity, but I've missed a opportunity to participate on this forum. Because I was not in a position where I could call in at six o'clock and raise my hand. The second issue I would like to bring up is if we take something away, then I think we need to give something back. The standing committees were, reports were taken away. They were taken away from the community. I believe that we've all heard several times from callers calling in. That that feels like, okay, that was taken, then what is given? So I would like us to have a conversation and if we take away standing reports from our district committees. And maybe we should, I don't know, but if we do that, then what, how are we replacing that with something else for their voices to be heard? And Ms. Thorson, does that make sense what I'm saying? Because and we used to have it where we would have like a CBOC report or we would have a. APAC report or we would have a MDAC report, but that's no longer existing. So if we're not doing that, how are we as a board going to ensure, ensure that we're hearing those voices on the dais? How are we going to make sure that we are? The community feels that their voice is being heard. And I think that we've all heard from the community that the original way we were doing it wasn't working. The new current way that we're doing it may not be working. So how do we then implement another way of doing it, taking into account all of those things that we found not to be working? And how do we make something that is actually going to be able to work? And, and keep in mind the limitations of not going past 10, 10:30. Because we do want to do the work of the board in a timely manner. And oh, sorry, I kind of got lost in the sauce there. My opinion is I would like to try the hybrid. I would like to try to where we hear from the community after each presentation and where we have a. We have a time at the beginning for the community to call in and speak. But that time at the beginning, I would like it to be open to where they have the entire time. If it's 30 minutes, if it's 45 minutes, that time is carved out in our agenda for public comment.
I, I have a quick comment and then I see that Dr. Hurst's hand is raised. This is not, uh, something that can be dealt with tonight or, or even in, in the very near future. But at some point in time, it, it occurs to me. Of all of these different standing committees that you have. If I had all these committees and, and it, you know, it's, it's a real dilemma. Because I, kudos to all of you guys for, for really being so committed to transparency and inclusiveness. We've heard that all the way from the very first time that we met you, that you, you really take that very, very seriously. But as a former superintendent, I don't know how in the world I could have really been focused on improving. The system to ensure that teaching and learning were really growing to their highest levels. To ensure that every single child was going to get the very, very best, the premium education they deserved and not just the education that some. Used to deserve or, you know, I mean, to really see equity in, in reality. I don't know how I could have done that if I had all these committee meetings to have to, um, address, have, have all of this adult stuff. You know, that really would honestly get in my way of, of helping to improve the system. And yet there is such beauty in inclusiveness of, of the system that you guys have, but it's a, it's a.
And I agree with you. I think that there's two different things that I'm talking about though. Like the, there's committees that we have, but then there were, there were standing committees that volunteers from our community. Were that volunteers from our community spearheaded. So that they, they ran, they would give reports back to the board because they were dealing with certain pockets of our district. I'm not necessarily talking about committees that the board is on. That's a different conversation that I hope that we have because I think that I would like to give as a board, direction to the superintendent about that. Because we're starting a new year and we need to come to some kind of understanding if we're going to have those committees or not. So I would like for us to talk about that during this meeting also. But what I was talking about is we had the, the board agenda had the, the volunteer committee people. Or our community members would give reports to the board. That's no longer there, so.
Important discussion for another day.
Okay.
Dr. Hurst.
Sorry, I, I love the conversation, but I just wanted to know if I could hear from trustee Reckler and trustee Christian. Uh, and this is the way I get my clarity when I hear from everyone. So I can know, you know, next steps for me. So I guess if I could hear from you, trustee Reckler and trustee Christian, I'd appreciate it.
Really good point.
Trustee Christian.
Okay, I, that trustee Reckler was going, okay, um. You know, just basically. On everything, if you just combine everybody. All together, you know, that. We bring in everything together so that we can be on that same page. And we have to just keep in mind, you know. We have a job, a task at hand to make sure, you know, the district runs smoothly. And. And then. We just have to make sure that we. You know. We, we always going to. Talk things out and, and, and making sure that we stay on the right pathway. So.
So with regard to public comment. Your thoughts?
With, with public comment. When you, when you look back, I guess, how, how the, the. The public comment was, was set up and, and now, you know, it, you know, we, we, we switched to try something different. So. You know, I just, I just look at, you know, knows. You know, making sure that, you know, the community at large, people, public comment, that people that are able to, to. Call in or. Have the opportunity to express their concern on, on a matter. But we just, we just need to look at, you know, what's best. And, um, and the consensus should come from all, you know, what's, what's best. You know, best, uh, uh, operation, you know, to run, you know, the board meetings. And that's it.
Okay, trustee Reckler.
So I'm not in favor of the new system and I believe you were at the last retreat where I expressed my concerns. I said I was going to try it, but after deep thought, I decided not to and voted against it. However, I am completely at peace. Because I think that the way that decision came about and the way that, uh, the discussion happened. And the way that the vote happened and the way everything happened, I believe it was fair. I believe it was equitable. I believe I was allowed to speak my piece and vote the way I wanted to. And I am okay with the way the decision went down, even though I don't agree with it and sleep very well at night. And so if somebody would want to change it, I'd be very open to hearing what they have to say, but I'm fine. It was fair and equitable and I felt heard.
So, um, trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, again, we are a democracy and we have to move forward majority. And I also agree that I will respect whatever we all decide. I guess I am putting on the table, like for us to change it, right? So. What I'm asking is if we would try this hybrid model moving forward. At least for now, and if it doesn't work, um, we also can't be killing ourselves and discussing this over and over. We go back to what we had originally. If majority of, of my colleagues tonight don't want to try this new model I'm proposing, I'm totally okay with it if that's what majority feels. Like trustee Reckler said, but I am putting it at the table and I would love to hear if majority agrees or not. That's totally okay.
Would you describe the model more specifically?
Yeah, so it's, um, public comment at the beginning of the meeting, um, for 30 minutes instead of an hour. And then 10 minutes instead of what we had, which was, correct me if I'm wrong, trust, President Phillips. It was, uh, 15 minutes. I am recommending 10 minutes, um, which is probably coming after each item. Uh, 10 minutes maximum.
Can I, can I ask you just a clarification question on this then?
Yeah.
Understanding that. A different part of this is how many items get on the agenda in the first place? Okay, so if you have an agenda filled with, you know, 50 items that people can comment. The part of the solution to this is a little bit more clarity and specificity about what gets on the agenda in the first place. I'm just putting this thought out there, okay? Or there may be only certain items that require a discussion. You know, on reports, for example, you, when you say every item on the agenda. Is that, does that mean every item gets 10 minutes? As opposed to maybe there are some items that are marked as important for discussion or something. I'm just asking that because, uh, if the agenda gets crowded and there's 10 minutes per item. That, that time can roll up real fast.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good clarification. Uh, I mean, it would be what we were doing before, right? Which is original model was that we had public comment on all the items that were pulled on the agenda. If, if an item got pulled from consent, then we would have public comment. If items in discussion or in action, it would get comment. Yes, I mean, I would hope that in the creation of the agenda, we won't have 50 items because we are all very long-winded, right? So, uh, if there are 50 items, we will be there till one in the morning because that's just how it is. But, uh, yes, I do think that in reflection, like trustee Reckler said in her comment. For me, I did not reflect on the downside of only having public comment at the beginning. And people not being able to give their opinion after they've seen a report. I know that I changed my mind after I hear Dr. Hurst. And if I do that as a board member, I know there's probably people in the public who also changed their mind. Which is what, in reflection, why I disagree with our current model. Because I do think that it doesn't allow people to make comments after they've heard information directly from staff. Because right now, our model, uh, assumes that the public is reading the reports that are attached. There are times that staff is so overwhelmed, they don't do their, they don't put the reports until very short, close to the, to the meeting. Or majority of people in the public are not going to look at the reports ahead of time, right? So, um, and then previously, in our previous model, we didn't have public comment at the beginning to the extent that we should have. Which then people felt that they couldn't give their opinion until we got to the item, which could have been at 10:00 PM. And then they couldn't stay till then, right? So this is why I believe this hybrid model hits both sides and it solves both problems. But again, I could be wrong because I was wrong about agreeing to the last model. So, so I'm putting it out there as a way to be solution oriented, uh, which I believe it will. But that's why I'm putting it forward. Hope that clarifies. I went a little bit further, but.
Thanks, trustee Phelps.
Really, I want to say three things. One, I am fine with leaving it the way it is. Two, if the board, if the majority of the board wants to change to a hybrid. My request is that we allow Dr. Hurst to go back and crunch the numbers. Because the numbers that I'm hearing right now, like with 30 minutes in the beginning and then 10 minutes per item. That has the great chance of actually being, it's definitely more than we're currently doing under the hour thing. Uh, and it has an opportunity to be more than we're actually we're doing in the original. So I would like Dr. Hurst to give him an oppo, if the majority of the board wants this. I would like to give Dr. Hurst an opportunity to bring something back that works within the time limits of us actually trying to end our meeting. So. That is, uh, those are just, I, I, I think the two things that I want to share, uh, letting Dr. Hurst come, come back. And, and then also, if we are going to do it to change it and letting him come back is, you know. Being able to have time to telegraph any change. So, you know, it wouldn't happen at the next meeting because people are not. You know, aware of, of what's going on.
Trustee Smith Folds.
So I would like to, I would like to lend my support behind the hybrid model. I think the hybrid model is good. I don't think that we've had agenda setting for the 25th yet. So I think that we can aid in the hybrid model by being very conscientious of what goes on the board. What goes on the agenda, the board agenda for the 25th. So then when we can try this hybrid model and because we are now as a group having a discussion about it. So if the majority of the board sitting here now believe that let's try a hybrid model. Then that gives us a intentionality behind the next agenda setting to keep it shorter. Because we know we're going to try this hybrid model. I think that that's something that it won't, we won't have to kind of push it back anymore. We can go out now and start following kind of this process of procedure. We're having a conversation about it. We are giving, if the majority of the board says to try a hybrid. Then that's giving direction to our superintendent to when, when we have an agenda setting. Then the president and the superintendent both have a idea of what, um, what the agenda should look like. With the opinion of the clerk taken into order, into, um, kind of into that process. And then we start and we have plenty of time to forecast to the public that this is what we're going to do. Now we're trying something new. The public has already been forecasted that we're going to come back and have this discussion and talk about public comment. I think that making a decision tonight will actually show that we are moving in that direction. Because we are listening to the opinions of not only board members, but we're listening to the opinions of our community. So what I would like to see is a decision made tonight about public comment. And again, I'm lending my support behind a hybrid version of public comment. So then we can have intentionality set for our next agenda setting and we can try this on August.
Twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth or 23rd, I'm sorry, the last, the last, uh, meeting we have in August. So that's what I would want to do now. So that's what I would want to do. Now, Mr. Uh, Mr. Brown and Ms. Thorndes, how would we go about having that discussion? Because we're, are, we're not in a position, are we in a position to we make motions? Are we in a position to where we take a vote? Are we just in a position where we come to a consensus and an agreement? How does that look now? So we can actually move this conversation forward to where we're giving direction as an entire board around this issue. Because I don't want us to leave tonight without having clarity around public comment.
So there's a couple of different, but there are different points of view, right? So um, one proposal is that we move forward with a hybrid model for the August twenty-fifth meeting, for the next meeting. Another proposal is that we ask Dr. Hearst to review the situation and present maybe a couple of options. And what the time constraints would be on both of those and then make a decision on the twenty-fifth as to which one to move forward with. So those are, if I understand that, that's kind of the, what the bottom line is right now. Now, somebody may say, don't do anything, you know, we're just, we already made a decision, you know, which is a whole different thing, but um, how, I guess we could ask, how many of you want to move forward tonight with a different model for August twenty-fifth? That's one.
Trustee Reckler's uh, videos off.
Okay.
With her unstable uh, internet connection, but.
Okay, sorry. So there was one, I'm sorry, I didn't see. I just asked, there was one person said they'd like to move forward with a different model on the twenty-fifth.
Sir, Dr. Hearst's hand is up, uh, Mr. Brown. I don't know if you saw that.
Okay. No, I didn't. Sorry. Dr. Hearst?
So I was just listening to all the board. I just was just asking for one clarification. So we're talking about uh, thirty minutes versus um, and that's for everything, regardless of number of hands are up from what I understand. So public comment will still be at the very beginning, but then also I think what the proposal for the hybrid would be after each discussion item or action item. So discussion is at the end of the agenda and you have action items. So if, if that is the hybrid um, proposal, then uh, for this particular board meeting coming up, it would be um, thirty minutes at the very beginning for public comment and then we have five action items. No discussion items. So that'd be fifty plus thirty. So that'd be a total of eighty minutes with that hybrid proposal.
So only on action items and discussion items would the ten minute?
That's what I heard.
Okay, not on consent. Is the consent agenda part of that? No.
Yes, yes, hold on. Actually, it is the consent agenda is part of it. So any items that get pulled off of consent. Actually, it's two, it's only two ways, right? Because technically, they can comment on the consent items to get stuff off. And then once it's off, they can comment again. Um, and then with the numbers that Dr. Hearst just gave, that's eighty minutes on a night where we don't have any discussion items, which is not normal, right? So um, one of the other considerations is the board, and we all know this, has a lot of work to do and the district is behind in a lot of different ways. And trustee Smith Folds used to wear a bottleneck. Sometimes we bottleneck when the board doesn't get all of its work done. And whether that's because we don't finish the meeting or because, whether that's because we only put two items on the agenda, so the meeting's not packed. Sometimes staff is not able to get their work done because we're not getting our work done. So that's another reason that we have to actually try to make these meetings more efficient and not just stretch them out. Because we bottleneck the whole system when we don't finish our work, because they have to wait on us to do certain things.
So I'll go back to where we were a couple of minutes ago. There was a proposal that we do something for the twenty-fifth. There was one person that indicated that that is when we should make the change. There was another proposal that we asked Dr. Hearst to present a couple of options and what the time constraints would be. And the third option is stay where we are for a while.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, I just wanted to be clear that the numbers that were given were based off of the August fourth agenda, right, Dr. Hearst? So the August twenty-fifth agenda would not look like, hopefully and intentionally would not look like the August fourth agenda. If we go hybrid, it's with the intentionality that the August fourth agenda and the August twenty-fifth agenda would look very differently because it would be, it would be, we would be conscious as an agenda setting team about what's on action and then what's on discussion. We would also be very clear that consent items are discussed once they're pulled off, because they're pulled off for discussion and they're put back on discussion. So it is a matter of the agenda setting team looking at those consent items too. And making sure that we are very clear and have a, a very have a very clear understanding of what the agenda process looks like. So for me, if, if we even went with the August fourth agenda, eighty minutes is twenty minutes longer than we already had. But it may be twenty minutes longer because we have sixty minutes already that we leave for public comment right now. Then by going by the August fourth agenda, it would have been now we're at eighty minutes. Well, that's twenty minutes longer, correct? That's twenty minutes longer than we, we already have, but it's twenty minutes longer with the payoff of the public feeling like they're being heard. With the payoff of us getting that understanding of we are listening and making informative decisions from the dais, that we're able to do a both and type of governance, which I think also in the long run helps build the trust that we're all looking to build. Helps build the relationship that we're all looking to build. Because again, we're not saying twenty minutes per discussion item and agenda item, which is what's in our bylaws. We're saying ten minutes. Let's do ten minutes for a discussion and action item. And then let's do thirty minutes at the beginning and let's be conscious about how we're setting an agenda. So we're keeping in mind that we don't want to overwork staff and go to one o'clock, twelve o'clock at night. But we want to be conscious of what we are doing as a board to say, community, we hear you. Community, this is your time to speak back to us so we can look at and all of us be invested with what's happening at our district level. So I think this hybrid mode, this hybrid type of public comment does everything that everyone wants. And it just makes us do our job about being concise with our agendas and it makes us do our job with, with about um, President Phillips being conscious of our time and our effectiveness when we're on the dais. But it also allows the public to have that, to have that voice and to feel that investment, which we all have to have. We have to have an invested community because if we don't, it doesn't matter what we say, it doesn't matter what is directed. The community keeps this movement and keeps us in a way that we're pushing forward for our children, all of our students. So again, I would, and Mr. Brown, I know that only one hand was raised and it was mine when we're talking about that hybrid, but I do want to put it back out to my colleagues. I urge you please to just try trustee Gonzalez Hoy's idea of a hybrid public comment, not on the fourth, but on the twenty fifth. And Dr. Hearst, is it the twenty-fifth? I, I don't want to misquote the date.
It's the twenty-fifth.
Okay, to try this hybrid movement on the twenty-fifth. Doctor, doctor, or Dr. Brown, Mr. Brown, could you kind of call the question again, please?
Yeah, well, I, I want to be clear on this because the question wasn't whether I mean, one option was to stay the course and do nothing. The, the other, the second option was to look at the options with some time parameters developed by the superintendent for the August twenty-fifth meeting. And then make a decision at the August twenty-fifth meeting on which way to proceed. You're saying, put the hybrid model in place on the twenty-fifth. And so that's the difference that I see between the two is one, look at the options on the twenty-fifth with some data from the superintendent or go ahead and make a change. Mr. Phillips?
Um, I think it was three. It was one, do the, do it on the twenty-fifth, the hybrid. I'm not putting them in order. It was also, don't do anything, leave it the way it is.
Right.
And it was also let Dr. Hearst come back to us with some options. Um, so those are the three, but the one thing that I just really want to point out um, is we are not voting tonight. We are having a discussion. Um, we are not agendized of anything. Um, and I don't want us to get in trouble with the Brown Act. We're having a discussion and folks are saying what they would like to see out of those three options, but this is not a vote.
With, with this uh, with fresh set of eyes that Jim and I have. I think all, all of the comments that have been made on this public comment topic sound reasonable. They sound, they, they make sense. I mean, all, all, all the different views uh, make a lot of sense. Um, but it's not, it's not agendized for um, an action item tonight. So that would, in, in time, um, is usually um, a friend. You know, to not rush to judgment on things. So for Dr. Hearst to be able to bring this to you for uh, discussion on the twenty-fifth to make a, to have it be an action item on the twenty-fifth. And knowing that the um, board president, board clerk and superintendent will, when they um, develop the agenda for August twenty-fifth will be very, very mindful of time. And to understand that really the only things that go on consent are things that are that are not discussion items, but they just need to move the business of the district along, that staff need to have board approval on certain things and and so being mindful also of what actually goes on consent. So you don't have people yanking stuff off consent because that's a waste of time too. And then being mindful of how many discussion items are going to be realistically be attended to, especially given this his, this time in history of West Contra Costa where people want to have their voices heard. You know, often in the future, when the six of you guys are really humming along and you've had time to be able to really prove and earn trust from this community, you're not going to have such outrageously um, insatiable appetite for community input from everybody. The trust will be restored, but during this period of time, you've got to also be respectful of that need. So it's a, it's just going to be a journey.
So I need some clarification. So was public comment on the agenda for this retreat?
It was on the agenda as a discussion item. I don't think it was on for action, though.
Okay, so when it's on, so it was on for us to have a discussion about public comment, which is what we're doing now, right? So the next step, because we're having a discussion about it, would be what? To put, to call for it to be put on the agenda for action? Is that, am I in the right, is that the right order of things? Is that how things are supposed to?
Yes, on the, on the twenty-fifth with options to consider in the time constraints.
And, and with time for your superintendent to be able to look very closely at this, provide you with uh, well before the twenty-fifth with um, some data and some.
And a recommendation.
And a recommendation that you can provide, you can then take action on to come to a decision and move forward then, one way or the other, on the twenty-fifth.
On the twenty-fifth, okay. So if I can just go back and just make sure that I'm very clear. What we're doing now is deciding if we want the superintendent to bring back to us options around hybrid, options around the time that hybrid would be involved, options around. Is that what we're saying? Options around what alternative ways of doing public comment would be? And he would present that to the board in a early enough time that on the twenty-fifth, the board comes ready to make a decision about how public comment would look from this point on or until we want to have another time for a progress report or a check-in about public comment. Is that, is that accurate?
That's my understanding. Dr. Hearst. Dr. Hearst will need to weigh in as well.
Yeah, so, so I'm, I'm really watching like the, the nodding of the uh, the board. So I, I think I heard a few different things. One, I think I heard uh, leave everything alone. I heard this other conversation here that we're having trustee Smith folds and I know that I think trustee Gonzalez Hoy shared. But I don't know if I heard from the majority of the board to say, go ahead and Dr. Hearst construct these options and bring them back for the board to consider for August twenty-fifth. But I heard loud and clear, you know, what that proposal was, but I don't think I have consensus from the board. That that's what I'm supposed to do.
So Mr. Brown, that's my next question. So how do we give, because this was, we're not voting. We're not, how do we give Dr. Hearst um, as a board, how do we give consensus? If we don't, how do we give consensus around, I am assuming the three options, or how do we give consensus around uh, what trustee Gonzalez Hoy has said? I think I've been very clear as.
I'll just ask people, are you okay with Dr. Hearst bringing back recommendations on the twenty-fifth? That's not a vote. That just, is that a, is that an acceptable outcome from where we are right now?
Is it a possible, because we were talking about three things and then we could maybe, you know, and those three things. And just having each person say what they would like to see, right? Which is those three things, one of them. Or even rank them in order and then Dr. Hearst could walk away with a kind of a clear understanding. Uh, because somebody's preference may be that there is not nothing, right? But uh, if the only answer is that, you know, he comes back with more recommendations.
That's fine, as long as we, he gets a sense of where the, where, where the board is on this.
So Mr. Phillips, or President Phillips, will you model first? So then just model what the three or four options that we're talking about and then you rank them and then we'll just go in order? Would you be willing to do that?
Trustee Christian has his hand raised as well. So whichever.
Trustee Christian, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say is um, uh, you know, for Dr. Hearst to be able to make that decision, you know, to, to go in and, and look at the whole thing and come back to us.
Okay. That's your first choice? Okay.
My first choice is to leave it the way it is. If my first choice doesn't win, my second choice is what Christian just said.
My first, oh, sorry, Mr. Brown.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoy.
Um, so I apologize. I got kicked out for a tiny bit when the second one was discussed about Dr. Hearst coming back and my, and I was freezing. So if I understand that one correctly, just just to clarify, is that Dr. Hearst would look at the different models and bring back a recommendation?
Yes, what the time constraints are and the possible time you're looking at.
Got it, okay. Um, well, my proposal would be number one, uh, try the hybrid model. If it also work, we'll go back to original. Um, second would be that Dr. Hearst goes on and does that work to look at the times. Third one would be to keep what we're already doing.
Okay, trustee record.
So I think you should leave it alone the way it is right now. I mean, it just started. We don't really know. So perhaps if you give it a little bit to see how it goes. I think it's worth it. Did a lot of work to get there. Should probably see how it goes. Second would be to have Dr. Hearst come back with some ideas. I do want to caution you or remind the board, we are about to open schools. And I really do encourage that all of his time is spent on opening schools. And not to give a mandatory deadline of August twenty-fifth to have this done. They need to be later in September. The primary focus right now is to get schools open and to get kids and teachers in classrooms. Thank you.
So I'm going to go back around. Trustee Christian, are you okay with that?
Mr. Brown, I think you skipped me.
Yeah, well.
For the ranking, for the ranking.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead. I thought we had yours.
No, not for the ranking. For me, for the ranking would be, one, to have a hybrid model. My second part of the ranking um, would be for Dr. Hearst to bring back recommendations. And Dr. Hearst, my idea of your recommendations are, you have the, the field to run with it. But with time allocations on those recommendations, models, on the models that you bring back, have time around that because we are one of the issues is time and effectiveness. So to have time measures with that. I don't have a number three. I don't think the original way we did it worked and I don't think the current way we're doing it works. So my top two options are the hybrid model on the twenty-fifth. My second is to have more options brought to the table.
Okay.
So trustee's reckless point, we are getting ready to open schools and it is going to be tense. So I want to make sure that we're hearing from the community every step of the way. So public comment has to get worked out. We cannot spend more time on public comment. We need to work it out. We need to have an answer. So the community will be able to have stability when it comes around this topic for the board. community will be able to have stability when it comes around this topic for the board. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So two of you want to stay the course. Two of you want to move forward with the hybrid model. And I have to go back to trustee Christian then.
I, I already said uh for Dr. Hurst to come back with the information.
Yeah. So we don't have a consensus on a number one.
That would imply that we stay under every, what everybody has been saying tonight about this three, four or five stuff that would imply that we stay where we are, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
You can't come to agreement on what the next step is. That would you want to give that means in fact, you're going to give a little more time and see how it works out.
But can I ask a clarifying question? We voted to suspend our bylaws. Four out of the five of us suspended our bylaws in order to make that change. If one, if one of the people who voted for that is now saying, I want to, I want to change that vote. I want us to redo that vote. Wouldn't that require for us to re-vote since we, since it's of our bylaws?
I don't, I don't know what the action was on the bylaws, neither do Sandy. So.
Because we changed our policy, we didn't, we didn't change our policy on public comment. We just suspended our bylaw on public comment so that we would, we could change it. Um, and that required four out of the five of us, four, four people. Require majority of the, of the
Okay.
Board to, to suspend the bylaws. And I'm saying I'm not comfortable doing that anymore. And I'm one, I'm one of the four who voted for it.
What was that? Action have a time limit to it? Was there any time constraint?
It didn't have any time constraint.
So if you were going to undo that, you would have to schedule that as a vote on, on the twenty fifth.
Okay, well, I'm asking you to schedule it. That's one of the four that voted for it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other items that we would like to address this evening? Because we're a little over time.
I also thought that um that I heard the board want to hear from Dr. Hurst after, not tonight, but after he um he works on this, this topic to see um where he come, what, you know, what with us he wants to share with the board after he does some, some more work on this. Does that make sense, Chris?
I think my understanding, the way everything went down is that we're leaving everything as is. And then the board will make the decision during the agenda setting meeting uh to put this on the agenda for the twenty fifth uh for a vote, from what I understand. So everything is on hold right now as far as me bringing my thoughts back. And everything is the way it is until the twenty fifth, and it comes on the agenda based on what trustee Gonzalez Hoy said. That's my understanding.
That would be my read on it. There is an action on the twenty fifth then, related to suspension of the bylaws.
President Phillips, did you have your hand up?
No, never mind. I'm, I'm, I'm good, never mind.
Okay, I, I mean, I hope would be that you could see this through together and listen to each other and come to some agreement that um there's some strong feelings on this. Uh, there'll be other situations like this that you're going to need to work through. And uh to try to come a decision that everybody can live with and, and support. Um, there are strong feelings on this, obviously, I, and not from just yourselves, but from the community. Um, you did take an action. You can always revisit actions, and that's been the request. I mean, if I, the bottom line is that we revisit the action that we took. And any board member has a right to request that, and that can come up for a vote. So that's the action on the twenty fifth is do we want to revisit the action that we took uh previously to suspend the bylaws? Is that, is that a correct statement? Okay.
Yes, that's what I understand.
Okay.
And this is a, a perfect example of a, of a, a real um serious dilemma that, that has uh very strong feelings attached to it from individual board members and also from community members. So we would just um reemphasize how important it is to um try to think outside of your, your own frame of reference and try to really hear your colleagues from where you're coming from. Try to step in their shoes and always demonstrate selfless leadership and work to come together on, on issues. It's, you know, this is one of many, many issues you're going to have to deal with that are going to cause some personal frustration. And yet, it's not a, it's not a personal job that you have. It's, it's a collective job that you have. It's not easy stuff.
No, not at all. Other items that we'd like to, that we feel you need to address tonight, Chris? From your perspective?
There's one more item and um, I'm not sure if it's a, if it's a lengthy item, but uh I know I mentioned just clarity from the board on uh committees. And I know that was a previous conversation and just looking for direction from the board on you know, how we're moving forward, especially starting the, the new school year. I made a recommendation. And I know the board has all seen that recommendation, so that was the last topic.
And the recommendation was?
The recommendation uh was um stopping all committees. Um, there was also one committee that would go on, and it would be um the budget committee, and that would be in alignment with um when the interim reports are due. And that was on, um, I think it was a quarterly basis. And there was two board members that was part of that committee, and that was uh President Phillips and trustee Reckler. Um, the conversation was um there were some individual emails that I had from some board members about that and the equity in that. So that's the real conversation uh around whether and there's committees at all. So that was the whole conversation that was through email.
Is, is this some, a moratorium or a restructuring proposal, recommendation?
It was a restructuring uh recommendation.
Okay.
We have the trustee Gonzalez Hoy's hand up and also trustee Smith folds.
Thank you, Cindy. Actually, Wes, I was going to bring up what Dr. Hurst said about committees, so I take it back my hand. Thank you.
Jamila.
So for me, I would like to support uh Dr. Hurst's recommendation with one caveat. I don't think if we have, if we are going to have one committee, we need to have all committees. If we're not going to have committees and don't have any committees, I'm that I have an issue with the equity and having one and not having the other three. I would like to go with the part of the recommendation of not having any committees. I think that one of the things that the committees did was it gave board members the opportunity to direct staff, and I think that's what we want to get away from. I think that we want to get away from anything operational, and I think that we want to get away from directing staff, and I think that the committees and let me just say, I absolutely adored being on the academic committee and absolutely adored being on the safety committee. But I can see how that's outside of my lane and my purview, and I think that it overworked staff. I think that it allowed me to act like a baby superintendent because I got to direct staff. And I think that it put me in a position to where I was giving direction when it was only two people present and not the three. So if I want to be consistent with my policy about, I think that we need to, as a board, set direction as three or more, we cannot do that if we're in a committee. Because a committee cannot have three board members. A committee can at the most only have two. So for me to have consistency and to walk the walk and talk the talk, I will sacrifice two things that I adored, which was heading the academic committee and being a partner to trustee Christian in the safety committee. And I will do what we said we were going to do with just to trust the employee that we hired. So I don't want any committee, not any of them.
Other thoughts? We okay with the recommendation? Mr. Phillips and trustee Reckler, uh are you raising your hand? Ye- yes.
No, I just wanted to say really quickly, I am fine with the recommendation. I support it. Uh, for the people who feel like there's an equity issue because they don't, no longer will have. I'm not going to say why they think it, but the people who seem to think that there's, well, one person has said it about the equity issue. Uh, but if there is somebody who thinks that, you know, they're being treated unfairly because um their committee goes away and they're no longer on a committee. Um, because I do support Dr. Hurst's recommendation and because of where we are right now as uh, uh financially as a district, I think it would be a very bad decision to get rid of the uh the, basically the finance budget committee, right? Uh, but for the people who feel like they're being treated unfairly, I'm willing to give you my position on the budget committee just so it can stay alive, because I think it is a horrible idea to get rid of that committee. Uh, and I like being on the budget committee, uh and I think I should be on it, but I'm literally, I swear to you. I, I'm only have one spot, but any of the people who feel that they are being treated unfairly because their committee's going away, you could have my spot if that will make you comfortable with letting the budget committee stay.
Dr. Hurst, do we have to have board members on those committees? Can we just have the budget committee without any board members on it?
I have shared my thoughts with the, the board president, and I do believe that it can happen within the context of a, a board meeting. The same uh reports.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoy.
Sorry, uh trustee Reckler's hand was up first. I can go after.
Okay.
So for the charter committee, I think the bulk of the work comes to the board on Wednesday night. And that can pretty basically dissolve. I certainly have some other suggestions that I'm going to send forward. But we updated policy and I think that's probably okay for now. I do support the continuation of the budget committee. I do think there is policy that we can do, eh, but it's up to Dr. Hurst. I mean, I will ask a ton of questions before and during meetings. This is complex stuff. Um, it takes a lot to understand it. I think the time that we spend in that meeting is actually very well spent just understanding different components, not only educating myself, but educating the community, but it's, but it's up to you. You know, um and that's uh, that's all I have.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoy.
Thanks, uh, Mr. Brown. Um, so I, I hear both sides. I do think that you know, we have to be as equitable as possible when we make these decisions. Um, I also agree that right now budget has to be a priority. And so, which is why I understand my colleagues on wanting to keep that one committee. But like I just heard Dr. Hurst said, right, I think that committee can be either a since it would happen quarterly, I think that we would all benefit from hearing the same information and digging deeper. I actually would propose that we turn that committee, if it happens twice a year, into a study session. Um, and that we're all getting the same information. We're all asking questions. Uh, because I do want to acknowledge and hear what President Phillips and trustee Reckler are saying, which is it's so needed that we definitely have additional spaces for budgeting. Uh, so that would be what I would propose, so that there's some middle ground between equitable committees. And we're also still providing the information to the community um and, and to ourselves, right? Um, uh, and then there had, no one has to worry about you know, what decisions are being, whatever it is, right? Uh, that would be my, that would be my proposal, uh, as a middle ground.
That's an interesting idea, and study sessions certainly fulfill that purpose. They're open, the community can participate, a lot of questions can you, and most boards that I've worked with have, have at least two study sessions a year on the budget. And uh, and that's the purpose of the meeting, period. Uh, so it's an addition. So that's an interesting approach. So it looks like there's a general watching individuals and everything that the recommendation would go forward.
Phillips and, and uh Dr. Hurst have their hands up, Jim.
Okay.
I'm fine. I'm, I'm fine.
Dr. Hurst?
I was just going to say um something very similar to trustee Gonzalez Hoy uh just shared that um what uh I have typically done or been a part of is making sure that there's a calendar um where we are actually doing regular study sessions with the board, and it's not just the budget. Um, which is why I did have the conversation um with the uh, the board president about this topic, that all of these conversations can be facilitated either in a regular board meeting or in a, a a, a work session, whether it's safety or academics. I really see, especially the direction that we're going and the goals that we're thinking about as well, that these are going to be regular items that's going to be reported out. I mean, we just well, I won't go into that, but I would just say that a work session can actually be devised to make that happen, a study session.
It sounds great.
Okay with that, trustee Christian?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, you know, I'll go to say thing um that you would need, got me, you know, with uh, um, a study session. Um, and I think that'd be beneficial for, you know, uh, for each area. Um, for uh safety, academics, and so forth. So I think um that was a good idea. Um, man, I'm tired, but this little day. But uh, Gonzalez Hoy uh brought up a good point, you know, and, and I think that it, it'd be um you know, a good idea to do because, you know, at some point we do need to look at the overall, the same, for example, just the overall of the safety of, of the metrics of our whole district, you know, everything. It just, you know, go from there. So, but yeah, academics and, and so forth, so.
Okay. Other thoughts before we move?
Hi, thank you so much. I literally unplugged my computer. I apologize. I'm coming from my phone now, and I will get my computer set back up. I missed what was said, but I just wanted to be clear that me saying no to committees was not me saying no to committees because I want it to be on the standing, the one that was going to remain, if that was the fact. I was saying no to committees because I think it's the board dipping into operations. From what I just heard, I agree that there should be study sessions. I agree that we should always at board meetings talk about student achievement, which is under academic committee. We should at every board meeting talk about budget because that's under fiscal responsibility. We should always talk about safety because that's one of the goals that we talked about before is having a safe, safe schools for our students. So I think again, it's, it's, it kind of goes back to agenda setting. How do we do it with intentionality?
Good point. So Dr. Hurst, do you have the direction on this then that you need at this point?
Yes, I've heard from all the board, and I heard the majority of the consensus.
Okay. All right. I think we've pretty much covered most of what we wanted to cover tonight. Uh, we've gone a little over time, but thank you for your time, your patience, your good listening skills. Uh, we're committed to continue to work with all of you and um now, given the, I, I, I think working with uh, with uh, with Dr. Hurst and, and the board president to set our next meeting and the agenda for it, what we would like to do, uh, we'll have that, we'll be having that discussion shortly and stuff to see what the next steps are and stuff. Okay, everybody?
Big hugs to all of you guys.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night. We with you tonight. Bye bye. Good night. We with you tonight. Bye bye.